Like they're not paying attention to us, then even though they have had the conversations, then I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the reaction is going to be of the Development Commission at that point.
And we wouldn't have time to react or review anything if they're just going to trot it out the day of the hearing?
Well, and so to the point, and again, and there was, I had, I did have a conversation with someone on the Development Commission afterwards, and they, they understand where we're coming from. You know, they, they feel like we presented ourselves very well. You know, they, you know, they said we are taking things down the right path with, with this. So beyond that, I don't know. You know, it's, these are the professionals who, you know, are looking at these as a project. But again, you know, this, this group, I will say, you know, we, we have made our voices heard with them, and they know what our concerns are. So our voices are being heard. So to what extent that that is going to get us with this, with the group on Thursday, I really don't know. But we will be making our presentations again. So, you know, we, Brenda Gishel, I see Brenda on the call tonight. Brenda is going to be, once again, representing Schumacher Place as the lead community in this. We will have two speakers from German Village. There will be another person from Schumacher Place, all speaking our three minutes of opposition. One will be addressing height, one will be addressing the traffic pattern in the shadow study. So we, you know, we're going to continue to focus on the topics that have been of the highest concern to us, so.
Hey, this is Adam Cohn. I'm the Vice President of the Schumacher Place Civic Association and Representative for the South City Area Commission as of January of this year. Just to shed some light, it's my understanding that, I know there's been some talk about people trying, or trying to get it retabled if no changes are made. My understanding is that they could request a vote regardless, even if it is a vote for, even if they know that they're not going to have, the Development Commission's not going to allow it to pass. But these are, you have to remember, these are all recommendations. So the vote at the Civic Association is a recommendation that most civics don't even get the, a majority of civics don't even vote on variance requests. Schumacher Place and the South City Area Commission is one of the few commissions that allows the civic to have a voice in their, in their, in the variance process. And then there's a recommendation from the South City Area Commission, and then a recommendation from the Development Committee, or Development Commission. That all gets taken to City Council, pass or fail, and then City Council takes it. So I, you know, if, not that I know what's going to happen, but plans, I believe plans were due, and you know, statements and everything were due, what, last week? Is that right, Chris?
That's right. Yeah, that'd be very hard.
So I, and based off my personal opinion, based off my conversation, Chris and I were at that meeting together with Mr. Bezuti. He's very confident in this project. He really likes his project. And I personally don't think there'll be very substantial changes, just like, if any, just like Chris mentioned. But again, these are all recommendations that ultimately go to City Council, pass or fail. They do have city staff support. Everything as far as traffic and parking was signed off by the city, for, I mean, unfortunately, and they view that very highly. And they also have the South City Area Commission vote, which before my time, it passed by one vote. City Council views that very, very highly as well. So it, again, these are all recommendations, and you know, it's a tough, as far as what's, what's next to come, it's going to be, you know, tough to decide what to do as far as what, what gives us the best opportunity to make substantial changes, or to have substantial changes done going forward. So just, just so everyone's aware, I'm on the same page as far as the process and what's going to be happening next.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, you know, I would say just tune in. Brenda, I see you. Do you want to make a statement?
I do want to make a statement because I can assure you, if German Village were not our best neighbors and supporting us, this would have already been rubber stamped. The system that we have worked through, I've been president four years, Adam has been Vice President, I know, three if not four years, and I'm telling you, they would have just let it go right through the system and going, pass this through, pass this through. You are the group that have kept us in the battle, and I am eternally grateful. I can throw a rock and almost hit this building. And what they're proposing totally changes our neighborhoods. So I appreciate everyone's strong support to stop this. All we want him to do is to put the heights down. And I, I don't know how many times we can request it. It has been an issue since March of 2020. But just know that you are the ones that are making the difference. They would have walked over Schumacher Place in a New York minute because they've done it on other issues.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you. Beth Person, I think you said you wanted to make a comment?
No.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I saw a hand. Well, thank you, Brenda. Yeah, it's, you know, it's, this is, and again, the Development Commission is not the last, not the last step, you know, and City Council. What I was told by, by Councilwoman Tyson's aide was that they do meet every Monday to review what's been put in front of them. She said typically, once there's been a decision with Development Commission, it can be anywhere from one to three weeks before it hits their desk. They meet every Monday to review what's upcoming. Now, because next week is a holiday, they may, it may push it out one week before it would hit their desk at the earliest. So, but she, she ensured me that I was free to reach back out to her to kind of see where the status is, and then start the process once we, we knew there was a determination. So, so there is the opportunity to have dialogue with her. She is the person who puts that on the agenda for council, and she will only do that once she feels that it is ready to go to the council for a vote. So if she feels there's the need for the dialogue with the various entities, she's the one that makes that happen, so.
Chris, could you publish or let us know when we can attend meetings that are coming up in the next few weeks?
I can tell you this much. I have already published on schumacherplace.org the link to attend the meeting on February 11th. I will get a text message or an email from Shannon Pine when this is going to City Council. She is very good at notifying me. So I will share that with all of you.
But February 11th is the next meeting that we can attend?
Yes, that's the development meeting. It will start at 6:00. We are number 12 technically on the agenda. However, two are going to be tabled, and it is known by the Development Commission. So we will be item number 10.
They're also televised, they're also on YouTube Live, all the historical, all the Development Commission meetings dating back the last, I think since Zoom started, or whatever they use, is on YouTube. Just type in Columbus Development Commission, it'll pop up.
Does anybody have any other questions that they'd like some clarity on? Okay. Well, thank you all for all that input. So we're, we're going to continue the good question.
I think Bonnie had a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, Bonnie.
Bonnie, you're muted.
Oh. Sal, can you unmute Bonnie?
I'm trying to.
There we go.
I'm just concerned about what we're doing with City Council members. Is it too early to start contacting them, or should we do it soon?
They have been, I know that there are people who have been contacting them, again, officially, you know, every, they, all the various City Council members are going to go under the direction of Priscilla Tyson as far as when they are able to react to it. But you are welcome to send any and all correspondence from here on out. I mean, anytime, just to kind of continue to plant that seed. I know there are people who have been doing that over the course of the last month or so. You know, I think that, I think some of us have gotten responses that says, you know, well, hey, we're going to defer this to Priscilla Tyson at this point, but, you know, we, we are aware of it. So, so I don't think there's anything that is a bad methodology to get, to get in front of various council members, so.
I think it's a poor excuse that he wants his high risers to be able to see downtown. That's not basically what most of German Village has on their, on their mind.
Understand.
It's not a hardship, right, Bonnie?
No. It's not why you moved, is it, Jay?
Says the man in the, in the high rise.
Right.
I will let it be known that both of my apartments in German Village were in attics where I had awesome skyline views. So it can be done in appropriate density.
Anybody else?
I just would like to add, I have all of the direct emails to City Council people, and you can bypass the legislative aids on schumacherplace.org. You can send it direct, and that's all on the front page, homepage of schumacherplace.org. Your voices make a difference.
Great, thank you. Yeah. Patton Barbara, did you want to make a statement? Sal, can you unmute them?
Trying to. Maybe not.
Chris, their symbol that they had up was applause and not a hand raise.
Okay, sorry. I'm missing it.
Either way, the one thing, just hopefully something comes out of the Thursday meeting, but I hope it just doesn't get used against us from the point of view of saying they're working with us. But I think the letter writing and phone calls are going to be really appropriate, as many as we can, especially if anybody knows some of these City Council members. That's it for us, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, what I would remind everybody is we are their constituency, so our voices do get heard. So. Okay. Okay, then at this point, then we are going to go ahead and move on to the report of the Vice President. Marie?
Um, yes. Again, I want to share what Chris and Jay said earlier. A big thank you to Andrew and all his work for the last year. He's done some incredibly important work for the organization. So thank you, Andrew. As we're heading forward, and as Chris talked about the interim position with Jody, we formed also a search committee to have a person, a permanent employee, full-time employee for GVS. So I want to thank Ned Thiel, who's a member of the German Village Commission, Cheryl Hackrass, co-chair for HPC, and Jim Penakis for joining this committee. We're already set to meet on Monday to start discussing the position, look again at the job description, see, you know, the environment we're in now, you know, short. Comment and those recommendations, and get from the board as we proceed. So I think that's the first step that we have. And then after that, we'll kind of look at timelines. Obviously, we'd like to do it sooner, so sometime probably in the spring, but until we meet and have some timelines, then we'll be able to place the, you know, job out there like we've done in the past. I think the previous position has taken anywhere from usually about two to three months. So we'll see if we can sometime in May, by June, have somebody in place. So that's the only updates. I'm sure we're going to have a lot more updates as we go forward on that. And so I'll continue on a meeting that we recently. As you probably saw in Neighbors for Neighbors, we've had a meeting about 10 days ago to start off the year of the sidewalk, which is this member resident-driven initiative where we want to expand on the work and really kickstart some of the things that GVS has done in the past. So we've got a committee of probably eight, nine members. We're hoping that expands a little bit with more volunteers. And so three of the things that we're identifying that we want to concentrate on is one, obviously, to create engagement and volunteerism opportunities, to look at having some programming, educational programming, and then to try and find some financial incentives for homeowners to be able to repair their sidewalks. As many of you are aware, last year was the last year we had, 2020 was the last year we had funding that came out of the operating budget to use about $10,000 a year. Obviously, that's not, it's been suspended since then. So we're looking at maybe, I think as Nelson discussed earlier on, we're looking at possibly having a fundraising event to have those funds, looking at possibly a $10,000 target raised by, you know, buying a brick. So things that we're going to explore here, and I think next week, we're going to have another committee meeting. So anyone interested, please join us. And Bill, if you have anything to add, please feel free to add.
Just what you were saying, which is, we're looking for volunteers because this is going to be a hands-on project, and especially with the fundraising effort. So anyone who has any interest in buy a brick is, looks like it's going to go forward. So if you have any kind of interest whatsoever, please let Marie or I know so that we can get you on the committee and give you some things to do.
John Clark, real quick, you two, can we get information to John Clark to get something in Neighbors for Neighbors for this week? I know we had something last time, but it sounds like we need to get something in again. John, do you agree?
So, yes, happy to create a Zoom link and, again, give more information about the program for people to join us. Absolutely.
That's great. Thank you.
Marie, could we just go back to Jody for a second? Are you going to get information out there to the public, how to contact her, what her availability is, what her function is?
Correct. And Chris can add some more details since she's had direct communication on how that's going to be set up with email and hours. Chris, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah. So we've, we've had some preliminary conversations and agreed to some things. We've got a few more details to work out. As soon as we have all that solidified, we will get that out to everybody. You know, essentially, she's going to be, you're going to be able to reach her via a German Village email address so that she can respond accordingly. Sal has agreed to kind of be traffic cop for phone calls. You know, she's, I will say, she's working full-time right now, so she's doing this as an aside, and as well, her kids are still full-time homeschooled. So she's taking on a lot to help us out for this interim period. So right now, we're looking at about 10 hours a week to help out with, with, you know, navigating COA applications, supporting HPC, serving as a liaison for the commission and so forth. So, so that's, those are going to be her primary functions. So, but we will, we will get that information out once we've got it tightened up and got it all set up. So. So, anything else?
That's everything.
Okay. So we will move on to the report of the Secretary. Bill?
The minutes have been sent to all of you. I move their adoption.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Color.
All right, thank you. All right, move on to the report of the Treasurer, Darcy. Sorry, you're muted, too. Darcy, you're muted, so we need to, Sal, can you unmute Darcy? There we go.
I'm on my phone, so is it echoing for you, or is it okay?
No.
Okay. All right. So you have my report, which came this morning. There was a lot of stuff in there. We had a finance committee meeting last night, which is the first one we've had in quite a while. So Mr. Nichols joined us, Wade Steen, and we also have a new member, Kathleen Kaufman, who was recommended by Tim Morbiter. We met with the Huntington to go through the returns on investment in the various designated accounts. So there are three accounts, and I included those statements with the email that I sent to you today. Those statements were hot off the presses of yesterday. So the timing is a little tight on finances for a board meeting turnaround. But what you can see in those, and I've given you some detailed narrative in the report, is that we're up about 15% over the year during 2020. And then there's also an inception-to-date return that, my recollection, I don't have all that in front of me at the moment, because I only have one screen, is about 8%. So had a good conversation with Huntington about kind of what's going on and what they're doing right now. There's virtually zero return in the bond or cash market, so we're a little, more heavily weighted to equities than we might otherwise be in an endowment kind of situation. So for any of you who pay attention to that stuff, that's the answer. But all good news there. And then continuing with good news, which is an awesome thing for the Treasurer at this point, having finished 2020, is that January operating results are positive $15,000 net operating income, and that is primarily a result of all of the effort that many people on this call made to get those membership letters out the door. I realized later this afternoon, after I sent you the email, that I never went back and filled in the number. At the very bottom of my report, there's a number that says that the total budgeted income for the year for our membership dues and slate contributions is about $80,000, and we have $25,000 of that already collected. So those membership letters just went out at the end of January, so this is pretty exciting momentum that we've got on the renewal, so we're excited about that. And I think those are the highlights. We do qualify, I believe I said in the last meeting, for the Paycheck Protection Loan Round Two. So we are working with our bank to get that in process. And overall, I think we're sitting in a good place right now. That Paycheck Protection Loan, you may recall when we passed the budget, I said there was a gap in there that we were budgeting to get to balanced budget, that we were going to have to figure out how to kind of fill that gap of about $30,000. And that Paycheck Protection Loan should fill that cash gap. So I think we're in a solid place right now, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for stepping up on the membership. I think we've gotten great, great momentum. We've gotten some very, we've had a number of members who have stepped up their membership, which has been great and encouraging. We've gotten some very nice notes from members. So, so thank you, everybody, for the effort of helping us sign those letters, get those out the doors, get them mailed, and we're reaping the benefits of that. So thank you to everybody. And a special thank you to the mail crew.
I make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay. Okay. Now we're going to move on to some specifics for this board meeting. First is Civic Relations Committee, and I'm going to turn it over to Eric Vanderson.
Thanks, Chris. So, you know, I think we all know that the past year has brought a tremendous amount of change to everyone's lives as well as the GVS. It's also been a year, I think, that politicians and our city leaders have had a lot of competing priorities between social issues, COVID, and everything else going on. So we thought it was a good time to kind of step back with the board and just confirm the committee's purpose, and then also put out a call to the committee leaders and residents to reach out to me. And I'll try to reach out to some people as well, but, but don't hesitate to reach out directly to me, to solicit priority areas that Civic Relations can focus on in the next year or two. So that's kind of the thinking. We'll, we'll talk about purpose of the committee, and then issues that may be relevant to your specific committees that fall within that purpose, you know, please reach out to me. And, and once we have sort of the menu of feedback, we can start to make sure we've got the right people to liaise with, whoever we need to liaise with in the, in the city, or state, or elsewhere, to advocate on behalf of those GVS issues. So I'll, I'll stop there before we go into the purpose. Does that make sense conceptually? Any, any questions on that? Okay. So I just want to read this purpose. It's in the, the meeting packet, but I'll, I'll read it out loud. So, "Advocate for quality of life issues for German Village and its residents while supporting the German Village Society's preservation mission. The committee will seek input from German Village residents on these issues and will interact with city and state government representatives, other historic neighborhoods, and with continuous neighborhoods to improve and enhance quality of life issues identified by residents, the committee, and the Board of the German Village Society." So I don't know if we, maybe I'll ask Chris and Bill if we need to do anything to formally adopt that, but we can at least take any feedback or, you know, comments in support of that purpose.
The, the purpose tonight was not to wordsmith a purpose statement. It was to get the concept and consensus from the Board that this is what they want us to do, and to reach out to all of the committees to see if there is, how we can interact with you, much like with historic preservation, the kind of things those committees want us to do with external relations. And so I don't think there's a need for a vote on anything with the expectation that there is a consensus of agreement that this is what our function is.
Fair enough.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. And if anybody would like to be a participant, have any interest, you know, please reach out to Eric. Eric, you may want to, you know, write up a small article on this as well, to let, you know, let the neighbors know that, you know, we're, we're starting down this path again, and read, basically, we're just trying to re-energize civic relations. I know we, you know, we, there was a time when we had a fairly robust committee, and in the last few years, it kind of, you know, kind of took, took a turn. But I think we're, I think it's, we're in a good place right now that we need to continue to, you know, pursue having stronger relations with the, like you said, with city officials, especially now, state officials, and really, you know, kind of reengage as we used to in the past. So thank you for taking the lead with this.
Yeah, Chris, and just, you made me think of something, just for people's awareness. And, you know, if you go back a few years ago, we were, we were mainly focused on UIRF funding, and that, that is no longer really a consideration with the city. So we've sort of morphed into ad hoc topics like Airbnbs, and so, you know, that's really the thinking. We need to define that menu of what does Civic Relations work on, working on, so, you know, we can get the right group together to go forward. So I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity and looking forward to hearing from interested people.
Eric, I have a question. It didn't catch me until you read it, but leading off with the quality of life issues while supporting preservation mission. I know dealing with civic relations, a very time-consuming thing to do, and therefore you're limited by what you can do. I'm only concerned that people are going to maybe miss the mark in terms of, of getting off on side issues, for example, that aren't necessarily related to the, how German Village preservation can be impacted. For example, zoning, the city is going to redo all their zoning laws for the city, and that has a direct impact on German Village. Are they going to take historic neighborhoods into consideration? And so my only concern is that are we setting ourselves up and asking people, well, what do you want? And somebody says, well, I'd like to have a swimming pool, as has come up in the past, or something else, which is not necessarily a bad idea. or something else which is not necessarily a bad idea, but when you have limited number of time and effort, I'm only concerned that it may miss our point on these key issues that will directly impact German Village.
Yeah, that's, that's an important point, Tim. I think that we do need to make sure we're working on the right things, and the way we can probably mitigate the risk that you're talking about is, once we do have that, that kind of list of coming back and making sure there's good board visibility to what that is so that it's aligned with the mission, because to your point, you know, we don't, the focus shouldn't be someone's individual, or individual issues like putting a swimming pool in their backyard. So, you know, that'll be up to us as a board to make sure that we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
It could be, it could be non-preservation-related infrastructure, whether it be sewers, you know, streets, like you mentioned, UIRF, you know, it could be the State Department of Transportation, you know, regarding that, you know, the, that whole, you know, mess there with the, with the highway. And so, you know, making sure we're involved more next time, you know, would, would help on that. So we should all be thinking also, I, of who might be a good idea, and maybe we could refer them to Eric, who might be good to serve on, you know, you know, nominate somebody, maybe even somebody that's not currently involved. You can't keep going back to the same people that are, you know, that are involved in other things. Are there people out there? I don't know. Is that sound like it, you'll, you'll take any, and then you can, you know, reach out to them to see if they, they want to get involved in that stuff. We need to be a bigger tent of people that can, you know, that can help. I mean, I'm, I'm a huge advocate for what you're doing, Eric. Thank you for.
Yeah, no, thanks, Jay. And I would take names if you're interested people. I've actually, part of the reason I wanted to come to the board with this is, we've had a number of people who are interested in participating, and they're, they want to know what they're, they'd be advocating for, right? So if we sort of build that, that menu, then we can make sure people understand, you know, buyer understands what they're buying, that the seller understands what we're selling. So, yeah, please, please send me your ideas, people, and we'll start to kind of reinvigorate what we're doing from a civic relations perspective. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Chris, can I jump in real quick? I just wanted to say, nice job on this, Eric. I appreciate you putting this together. And for all of us who chair committees and sit on committees, this isn't a bad idea for us to look at doing this for our own committees. I think that it's great that he actually took the time and put this together. It made me really think about how do we define the, the roles and the purpose of the committees that I'm on and that I chair, so.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Anything else on this topic? Okay. Okay, so then we are going to move on to our ad hoc committee on package acceptance. Tim?
All right. The report is in the packet. As most of you probably know, we have been meeting about putting together a plan of figuring out how we can go back to doing the package, package reception, package delivery system that the meeting house was doing. So Bill Curless gets the applause on this one. He was able to research this and come up with a very workable plan that even involves technology. I know, shocking.
I can hear you.
And he put together a very workable plan. It involves a, a little bit of, of high-tech. It's basically putting together a database, and then some training for the volunteers. We know there are going to be some, some things that we need to work out on it, but we think that we can very, very simply put together a package delivery system that can work and benefit the membership. The details are in there. It would be basically free to all members, anybody who wants to enroll in the package delivery system. If it's not a member, it can pay 50 bucks, and we'll toss in a membership along with that, which is basically the price of membership. So, yeah, that's what we're looking at doing, and we know that there's going to be some costs associated with it. We're going to need to bring on possibly some help if anybody knows somebody who can work with access to do a very, very simple database inquiry. Please let us know. And so there's going to, there may be some cost. If we can't get a volunteer to do that, there may be some cost with that, and then a little bit of cost with equipment. So what we would like to do is looking at the, looking at the motion, we'd like to put together a motion, and we came up with the total of $1,000. We think that that's probably going to be very doable. The good thing is, if we figure out that it's not doable, we will not have spent anything prior to that. So chances are that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have any sunk costs if we, if we figure out that this amount isn't going to work. But we wanted to get this, an approval before this meeting so that we can move forward on it and not be delayed another month, because we want to be ready. Whenever the meeting house does open, we want to have this system up and in place. So you want me to read the motion? Are we ready for that?
Just moved it.
Just moved to pass the motion as stated?
Yes.
There you go.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay. Thank you, Tim. I think everybody's going to be very excited to know that we are approaching this topic again, you know, and, and we started talking this, you know, recently, that as our volunteers, people are starting to get vaccinated, they're going to start feeling more comfortable. There's, you know, talk, and I know Bonnie probably has been a part of some of these discussions as far as, you know, we, we may have an opportunity to open up in some limited capacity and kind of greet our neighbors and visitors again here sometime in the next few months. So more to come on that, so, but, but thank you to everybody for, for taking the lead with this and getting us prepared for that, so.
Great, and thank you all, and again, a special thanks to Bill for his work on this.
Yeah. And I'll pass you guys to background.
Chris, by the way, my, I don't have a hand on, on my thing. I have clapping, and I have all this other stuff, I don't have a hand. But anyway, I just want to give Bonnie an opportunity to say anything, if she had any thoughts regarding the proposal, or... And Bonnie, you're muted.
I think the proposal is, is a very, very good one. I'm, I'm, I need to start talking to some of the volunteers now. I think there's going to be a number of training issues. Half of the people will love it, half the people will not like it. So we'll have to sort out how to put the people together schedule-wise so that we can accomplish it. But my thing with them is going to be, you know what? All you did is complain that nobody ever answered their phone, so now you don't have to make those phone calls. Just, we'll just send them an email and see what happens. So I'm, I'm looking forward to making it easier and, and more friendly and getting back in business, but I know that we don't want to do it in a rushed fashion, so we got to train carefully.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
And if I could just throw something in there, Tim, you may not realize that Bonnie was a part of this process. It was Bonnie, Ann McGee, Tim, Bill, and myself that have been taking this on, so she's been an integral part of the whole thing the whole time.
Thanks, Greg.
Well, thank you all for this. So I think that, I think we've, the other things that I also want to talk about, that the one thing I didn't mention earlier that we are starting to initiate, is starting to plan for our events. So we do have a meeting set for February 18th for a number of people who have expressed an interest in helping us frame that, so we'll get that announcement out as well so that we can kind of start down that road. That's going to also open up the discussion about how we present sponsorships for the year. I've had a couple of conversations with some, some of the folks from the various, what was I calling them, the German Village umbrella groups, the Garden Club, Jeff Stoller with the, with the Watercolor Group. They, a lot of people want to start to get engaged and, and want to see how can we collaborate with all of these different groups so we can kind of support one another. You know, we've all been on standstill, everybody's itching to do something. I still, I don't think we still feel that we're going to be back to normal anytime soon, but we're going to try to see what we can do, what we're going to be allowed to do, what we think we can get by with, you know, whether it's going to have to be another type of virtual event, or if we can do some type of outdoor themed event, maybe over a series of weekends, rather than trying to do something, one big event of one weekend, maybe it's something we could spread out through the course of a month. So a lot of things are on the table right now, but again, we want to get a number of groups engaged and kind of to see what we can do to support one another and generate some energy and kind of get everybody back to some type of socialization. So, so more to come on that. So, and thank you to those of you who have stepped up to be a part of that. So, you know, we're, we're, we're moving ahead, and I'm excited that we're, we're kind of starting to see a little bit of the light at the end of the tunnel, so, so thanks to everybody. So if there is nothing else, is there any old or new business? Darcy? Oh, you're, for some reason, you're muted.
Using the phone is hard. With the Zoom, I know how to use the phone, I know how to use the Zoom, I don't know how to do them together very well, I'm sorry. Sal sent me a text while we were talking that since I reported the $25,000, which is on the financial statements, and another $5,000 has come in this week in membership, which is awesome. So we're at 30 out of our goal of 80.
Awesome.
You can all do the clap now.
Good job. You can all clap for that. Great, that's, that's, that's a good way to end on our meeting. And I have one other thing. We have a little surprise for everybody, and I'm going to let Sal, is going to take control of the screen and express, and tell you kind of what his project was in the month of December, and kind of explain where we are with it. So Sal, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yeah, so towards the end of, well, it was the beginning of December, we talked about maybe doing a drone video shoot of the village and all the lights, and snow almost cost us, snow almost cost us the shoot, but we were sneaking it right before Christmas, and so I'll show you the video that we have up so far. It's about a five-minute video. Let's see how you like it.
Having trouble hearing Sal.
You couldn't hear me?
You're a little gravelly.
How about now?
Now you act up.
Is that better or no?
That's better. Yeah.
Is this better or no?
No, this is much better. Yes.
So, the, I'll go back to the beginning. Back in December, we talked about doing a drone video shoot for the holiday house competition, and snow almost cost us the entire shoot, but we were able to sneak it in at the end of, towards Christmas, and we got the video, we got about probably an hour and a half worth of video. I edited it down to about five minutes, so we'll see how you like it. I edited it down to about five minutes, so we'll see how you like it.
Really nice. Thank you. And, and as Sal mentioned, he's still, he's still got a little bit of refining to do to kind of come to a closure on that. But then we're going to get that posted on the website and we'll, we'll make sure it gets in Neighbors for Neighbors too, for people to have a link to that once, once it's finalized. So, so thank you, Sal, for that. And thank you to your friend Zane for taking, taking the lead with this as well, so.
Yeah, we, we had fun. It was, we kept driving back to the meeting house to recharge the battery. It was, I think, 20 degrees at night, the coldest night in December. It was freezing. But I thought, I'll add in the last clip to the backend, and then it should be good to go.
Great, great. Well, thank you. I think that's a nice way to end the meeting. One other thing that I will just say is like, as we all know, it's really cold out there, it's really crappy snowy. We're kind of in the throngs of this, so I encourage everybody, number one, to stay safe and warm yourself, but also let's check in on some of our neighbors, make sure that everybody is, is taken care of because everybody, I think, I think we're in the middle of this, just little phase of nobody being able to go anywhere and do anything. And so I think people need a little extra attention right now. So, so if we would all continue to check on our neighbors, I would certainly appreciate it, so. And with that, if there is no other business to bring before the Board of Trustees, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chris. Chris?
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.